Most stressful earlier.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting, work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. So, members of the public are welcome to attend in person, and we welcome the public at all of our meetings. They may also choose to watch us at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. And more information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the council agenda packet. So, this is a work session, and it's very informal. And we go directly to the items on the agenda. And so, the first item on the agenda is the Costco Wholesale Corporation's sketch plan to be redeveloped, the 911-140th Street West. So, Mr. Travis Bisterdrill, Deputy Community Development Director is presenting. Travis, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is a sketch plan review. It's a bit of a repeat from a previous project that you reviewed last year, but the developers come back with some additional information for your review and recommendations. So, just as a little bit of a background, the city and Costco have now entered into a purchase agreement to sell one of the primary principal properties involved with this project, 911-140th Street West, to Costco. In partnership with city staff, Costco has also completed a community engagement session with neighbors, which I'll speak to briefly. And they have submitted a sketch plan for review here tonight. So, the sites that we're talking about are the kind of the primary Costco location, located between 140th, 141st Street, Burnhaven Drive, and McAndrews. This development also includes the property located at 14001 Burnhaven Drive, the location of the former Pumpkin Patch daycare. And then, the primary development site is the 911-140th Street West here, shown in the figure. So, just as a reminder, sketch plans and the sketch plan review process is really an opportunity for the developer to come before the council, provide a high-level summary of what the development looks like, and then, collect your feedback. There's no engineering or detailed schematics provided in this review. No formal decisions or actions are required of the council. It's just an opportunity for you to provide feedback to the applicant and staff if needed. In this particular transaction, the roles and responsibilities, the city, in this case, is responsible for facilitating the land sale, which Beth Weber has been working on diligently. The land use and zoning needs to support the development, and then, the actual development review process itself. Costco, on their end, will be submitting the application materials, the development, and then, engaging with the neighborhood. A little bit of site background. The two sites that'll be most impacted by this project are 911-140th Street West. This is the location of the former Fire Station One building. It's two acres, 2.36 acres in size. Currently guided as mixed-use, but zoned as parkland, which is a common designation for our city-owned parcels. And we'll need to address that as part of the development review process. The other location, like I mentioned before, is 140th, I'm sorry, 1400 Burnhaven. That's one and a half acres in size, guided as mixed-use and zoned as mixed-use. So, the proposal itself, much like what you saw last year, is the relocation of the existing gas station, adding a number of pumps, increasing their capacity from 18 pumps to 32, and includes stormwater retention basin. So, the figure here shows kind of the high-level plans for the site. As you can see, the existing fuel station located on the north end of the property is removed and relocated to 911-140th Street West. And then, the Pumpkin Patch daycare site is converted to staff parking, which would be serviced by a shuttle in high-volume, the busy shopping season. And then, zooming in a little bit closer, you can kind of see how the site is laid out. It's a right-in and right-out on Burnhaven Drive. And then, the other access point to enter the site for customers that want to use the fuel station is off 140th Street. And then, everybody, or I'm sorry, those that use the fuel station will exit the site on the easternmost exit there on 140th Street. So, the city approvals that we'll need to move forward with this project, again, at a high level at this early stage, is rezoning the existing parcel at 911-140th Street to mixed-use from park. And then, we'll require a conditional use permit as well, which is a permitted use in the mixed district. We did hold a neighborhood meeting back on April 10th. We sent the notification out to 66 property owners kind of in the immediate vicinity of the site. I think we had about five individuals attend. And those individuals raised concerns about traffic, landscaping and screening, and vapor venting, which the development team is here tonight and can probably speak to a little bit of that. Policy consideration, we're just looking for feedback from the council on what the developer has proposed thus far. And then, next steps. We anticipate receiving a formal development application. We could hold a second neighborhood meeting if needed, but given that we had very low turnout, and I think the applicant is going to address many of the concerns that we heard, it may not be necessary. And then, this will go before the planning commission in a public hearing and for final approval with the city council shortly thereafter. And with that, I will turn it over to the development team. Larry? Do you want me to go back to the kind of the overview?
And you want to introduce the development team?
I'll let Larry introduce himself.
Hi, Mayor.
Hello. It's good to see you again.
It's good to see you. Again, my name is Larry Jurjek. I'm a Costco real estate consultant. With me tonight is Mike Stratus, one of our senior real estate brokers. And Tom Meyer is our project civil engineer tonight. We're really excited to be here tonight. We've been discussing this property and the Pumpkin Patch daycare property for probably over two years now. And so, you have seen the plan. I think, Travis, thank you. You did a great job explaining the plan. I won't get into any detail with the plan. There's just some slight modifications that we made inside the warehouse site, actually. And this was due to the proposed traffic signal. We've had discussions in the past about how that intersection will change from how it works today with the all-way stop. Or no, I'm sorry, it's not an all-way stop. It's a two-way stop. And I know we had some discussions, and there were some concerns about the signal and traffic going into the site. So, we've actually looked at that and modified our internal drives, added about 70 feet of throat to that, to our main road, reconfigured the parking, and moved the stop bar further west. So, that was based on our traffic consultant's recommendation. So, we would, we're curious to see what your traffic consultant says as well. Because, as you know, this, your consultant will be looking at the whole traffic signal in Burnhaven and 140th. And so, we'll collaborate in that regard. But Costco's very excited to get started. And we're here to answer any questions. And I understand that we may be on the agenda for an October Plan Commission. So, we'll keep that in mind. But I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Members of the council, any questions? I mean, this is the second time we've seen it, and now, we have a good idea of what you're going to be doing. Any questions? Yeah?
Not quite, just a comment. I like what you're doing on, I guess, call it that ramp, you know, that comes up to grade at the road that you've extended it by about 10 parking spots.
About 70 feet.
70 feet, yeah. So, it's giving a little bit more runway for the cars coming out right into that intersection. Maybe that'll lessen the bottleneck. And just the signal, I mean, it's a highly successful store that has created highly significant, you know, significant traffic issues. And so, I think all of these things are going to help dramatically impact to the positive the circumstances over there for all shoppers.
Thank you.
And for your employees, right, getting across safely.
I would agree.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? No. Really well done, I think. And thank you so much with working with our staff. I understand that it's been a very collaborative project. And thank you, Beth, for all of your work in facilitating a lot of the work on our side of that transaction. You and Travis did a wonderful job. Thank you so much. So, to your team, Jeff, thank you. But it just seems like a lot of the things that we talked about, you all took to heart and did what we had asked you to do. Thank you so much for that. I think we can get through the traffic issues that were raised. But I looked at it before, and I thought, on that exit on, onto Aldrich, you've got a stoplight that allows traffic to platoon, but allows entrance into. So, but whatever the traffic engineers come out with that. Because I did a couple of runs after looking at all of this. It wasn't so hard, so I wasn't quite sure. Because I also, because I'm a Costco member, and I go to get my gas at Costco. So, when I exit, I go south and do a flip a U-turn to go north. And it just seems like a safe maneuver. And so, I think with the traffic engineers taking a look at it, it'll be fine.
I would agree. Yeah.
Yeah. But I think it just allows the people who are concerned that came to, you only had about, what, five people, if I was reading the background correctly?
Mayor, council, that's correct. And with regards to the traffic study, we did ask our engineer to look at that intersection too, so they will take that into account when they're looking at the whole development and the impacts on traffic. The Aldrich and 140th Street.
So, that, but otherwise, the landscaping that you have around it also gives it some nice buffer for visual appeal from 140th. I'm good with it. Yeah. And thank you for working collaboratively.
Oh, absolutely, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I know from your background and your letter that you're also going to take a look at the traffic, at the signal light at 140th. Okay. Very good.
That's correct.
Anecdotally, ask one quick follow-up question. How long does this put Costco out until another need arises, you know, roughly? As far as additional parking beyond this?
Oh, additional parking?
Yeah.
Well, that's a very good question. I mean, we're basically landlocked, right? I mean, you know, to add parking, we just really can't. This is probably one of the last developments we could probably do, unless, Mike, you have any other comments?
Hi, Mike, it's good to see you, Mike. You've been on this journey for a long time.
I have been.
From Grossman's Chevrolet to today.
It is. So, I'm going to answer your question a little anecdotally. So, currently have 659 stalls.
Yeah.
In Burnsville, I just ranked the 110 Costcos in the Midwest, and I ranked them by their sales volume per stall. Because that would then tell me which Costcos really need more parking. And Burnsville...
Mike, come over here so the people at home can hear you too.
Okay.
So, I ranked all the Costcos in the Midwest in a simple spreadsheet based on top-line sales per parking stall. And what that did was that helped me identify what Costcos are underparked and how dramatically are they underparked. This building was, I believe, number 10 out of 110, towards the top. And that's not where you want to be. So, that means that it was grossly underparked at 659. This improvement will take it up to 783. And I can tell you right now, I'm working on around 10 or 11 Costcos. And most of them have 850 to 925 stalls. So, this is a roundabout way of not answering you. But the good news is, you know, as you point out, it's a wildly successful Costco. In fact, it's funny, whenever I see the CEO, and I'll see him Monday in Chicago, the first thing he says to me, "What's going on in Minneapolis?" Because we just do very well here. The broader community has embraced us. But I could see in five to 10 years, we might need more parking. I don't know what the solution is then.
Then, we'll just have to deck it.
Yeah, we might have to deck it.
Yeah, yeah.
If we are doing...
We just have to deck it.
And we are doing that. We're very familiar, we haven't done any decks in the Midwest yet. And we've done one in Texas. But I think that that day is coming. You know, it's not preferred because it's tough. You know, the vertical circulation systems are tough when you're pushing a cart, and they break down all the time. I've learned this because I'm doing some work for Costco in Asia, and I see how it works in Asia. But I think that day is coming.
Yeah.
I don't think it's coming in the next, you know, here, in the next, probably not in the next five years. But thereafter, I think...
Well, it's always good to have a plan in place.
Yes.
And so, that your capital investment for facilities are then factored into your pro forma.
They are, and it's self-serving, but it's, for the company, it's all about safety. Safety for the member, safety for the employee. And I get reminded about that frequently from the client.
Well, then, we'll probably just be talking to you about a ramp then in years to come.
Probably, but I'll be on a beach making 20%. I won't be around parking.
Yeah. You and me both.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mike. Does that help you?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Well, Travis, Larry, and Mike, I think it's a go.
Excellent.
Great, right. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you so much. We appreciate it. And thank you for coming to Minneapolis, Minnesota, from Chicago.
Oh, yeah.
Our pleasure, our pleasure. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Take care. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Reuters Walton's sketch plan to the redevelopment of 2316 and 2420 Old County Road 34 Place. Presenting this evening is our planning manager, Mike Morosella. Mike, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Reuters Walton has signed a purchase agreement with the property owners of 2316 and 2420 Old County Road 34 Place. Reuters Walton has submitted a sketch plan for review to revitalize these sites into a multifamily complex. Reuters Walton is a local developer in the Twin Cities area. Have a few projects in other states as well. They'll provide a little background when we get to the applicant. The subject sites that are shown on the screen here, they are located to the north of Old County Road 34. They're two larger, as I like to call, exception parcels there. Previously undeveloped, not planted. Currently residential properties. To the south is Williams Drive. To the east is County Road 5 and Morgan Avenue. And to the north is Frontage Road and Highway 13. Again, a sketch plan is an opportunity for the council to hear the same thing the neighborhood heard at the neighborhood meeting earlier this month. It's an opportunity for them, the council, to provide input on the project and provide feedback to the applicant. None of the decisions here are formal. And this, the council provides feedback on the proposed project. And the applicant takes the information and revises the plans as needed. The city and this, on this application, is in charge of the land use, zoning, and facilitating the development review process. Reuters Walton, developer, develops plans, submits the applications, and engages the neighborhood. The first property of the two is 2420 Old County Road 34. It's 3.19 acres. It's currently an occupied residential property with many vehicles on site. It is guided low-density residential and is zoned R1, one-family residential. The second property is 2316 Old County Road 34 Place. This is the smaller of the two, 2.85 acres. It's unclear what the use of the property is, that a residential home is on site, but there is also many vehicles on site. This one is zoned and guided commercial. It's zoned B4 highway commercial and guided as bus, business, retail, and office. The total acreage between the, when you combine the two sites, is 6.04 acres. The proposal in front of you tonight is a total of 118 units. One building, four stories, about 42 to 46 feet in height of a flat roof, give or take. Applicant is proposing 114 surface stalls and 108 parking stalls. It's worth noting that the applicant is proposing 118 units. However, that number may be reduced as the applicant works on financing with Dakota County and other partners on this project. Developers anticipating that number is probably closer to about 100, 105 units when it's done. But at the most, 118 is what the proposal would be. On the screen is the proposed site plan. Access will be provided off of Old County Road 34 Place. The applicant has, we did have a neighborhood meeting, and the applicant did incorporate some of the comments provided by the residents and the current proposed site plan. Some of the parking is relocated to the rear of the building and to allow, reduce impacts on the adjacent properties with the parking lot in front of it, and reduce asphalt and parking lot in front of the primary structure, principal structure, excuse me. Again, this is very conceptual. Not a lot of engineering's been done at this time on this one. However, they're moving forward with a prototype very similar to this one when they make application. Let the developer touch more on that when we get into it. Again, this is going to be a workforce housing project that's 60% AMI. 60% AMI in Dakota County is $55,620 annually. Rents consistently funded by Dakota County partially. The one-bedroom rent would be capped at $1,490. Two-bedroom would be at $1,738. And a three-bedroom at $1,987. The applicant will be looking for some flexibility as in regards to setbacks, especially on the west side of the subject property, adjacent to the existing single-family lot. There, the flex, if the zoning code was implemented, the setback would be almost 100 feet from that property. However, that is not, it doesn't work with the topography of the site and other things that the applicant is looking at currently. And then, also the building height. The maximum height in high-density districts is 35 feet. The applicant is proposing 42 to 46. It's worth noting that the other apartment building in the general area across the street on Williams Drive is about 55 feet in height currently. So, very similar in height to the surrounding area. This project will require a comprehensive plan amendment. As previously stated, one of the properties or both the properties are not currently guided high-density. So, they would need to be reguided to high-density residential and then, rezoned to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan to R3B, high-density residential. On the map on the screen here shows the current zoning and land use. On the top left-hand corner is the current land use, where that is low-density and commercial. Those are re-guided, are proposed to be guided to high-density. And same with the zoning. As you can see, the proposed land use and zoning does fit in at the surrounding area as a buffer from lower densities to the higher and more intense uses on the bottom of the hill there. So, it does kind of, it's not spot zoning. It does kind of fit into the surrounding area. There we go. Make sure. Additionally, a conditional use permit is required for apartment uses in the R3B district. And a planned unit development is required to the height and the setback, as previously mentioned. And the properties will need to be planted as part of the application. Neighborhood meeting was held on July 24th with about 15 residents in attendance. Residents were, adjacent property owner was one of them, and residents that live across the street from the proposed project. Items that were the primary concerns raised were traffic. Was the number-one item. As a result, we have asked the applicant to complete a traffic study to see if there's any kind of, or we'll require the applicant to do a minor traffic study to see if there's any improvements required. Additionally, height of the building was a concern. And then, parking lot screening was another concern from the residents across the street. And then, the number of persons there. Right now, it's two single-family homes. And with the proposed reguidance and rezoning and the use, it'd probably be about 100 to 200 persons on site. Maybe a little more than that, give and take there. Again, 15 persons were in attendance. And overall, they're, the applicant has addressed some of the concerns already, as shown on the site plan. And they'll talk about that a little bit more here. So, the applicant is looking for feedback on the proposed sketch plan. That's the policy consideration tonight. Next steps is the developer will submit a formal application. We will hold a second neighborhood meeting. The first one was on a concept scale, so the plans weren't formalized. We want to hold another one when we have more formal plans where the neighborhood can see the landscaping, see what the building's going to look like, see what the final plans that will be presented to the planning commission and city council at a later date. Then, a planning commission meeting will be held, and that's where the public hearing will occur. Then, a city council meeting. And then, since this does require a comprehensive plan amendment, the Metropolitan Council will have to review and approve the comprehensive plan amendment. This will be administratively reviewed by the Metropolitan Council. We've been in conversations with our sector rep about it already. So, that is the proposed next steps. With that, I will turn it over to the developer to kind of walk through their proposals and introduce themselves.
So, Mike, you want to introduce the developer to us, please?
Yep. Jared Ackman is with Reuters Walton. He is quote-quote "the developer."
My name is Paul Keenan. I'm also a developer with Reuters Walton, working with Jared on this.
Did you say your first name is Paul?
Paul, yep. Paul Keenan.
And my name's Brian Paterick. I work for Cos Wilson Architects. We've been working on a few projects with Reuters Walton.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you, Clarence. Do I need to turn this on? No, we're live. Beautiful. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate the time this evening, Mayor and council. What I thought I would do is just get a little brief background, because I know we're limited on time, on Reuters Walton and kind of what we've done to date. And then, kind of walk through, you know, the orientation of the site, how we see it today, and kind of how we got to our concept. And then, kind of go through some inspiration or examples of kind of how we would visualize it. And then, kind of go a little bit deeper dive into the unit mix and rents and kind of how that compares to some of the local projects. And then, we'll probably leave for questions or comments as we can continue to evaluate the proposition here. So, without further to do, bear with me on technology. Just click to the right, perfect. So, Reuters Walton Development, we're local, we're based at St. Louis Park. We've completed roughly 45 ground-up projects over the last 20 years, most of them in the last 10, totaling over 5,000 units. We've been pretty active, averaging like two to four projects a year. Most of them have all been in the Twin Cities. I mean, that's our home. That's where we all live. And we'd be excited to add a Burnsville project to that. So, as Mike alluded, we're talking about two, oh, the clicker doesn't do it. Two parcels here off of Old 34, just south of 13. We currently have those two project, or two parcels Um, we currently have those two project, or two parcels under contract through essentially the end of the year to kinda consider a concept moving forward. Um, as Mike mentioned, you know, I'm just showing pictures of a recent site visit we did as we explore some of the environmental, um, makeup of the site. But they're currently two single-family homes. Um, both are rental and/or a contract for deed are, are the current occupants and both are currently used for some sort of auto repair, um, business, I think, on the side. So we feel that they're kinda severely underutilized or what they could be, um, and are excited to talk about kinda our vision of the site. So with that being said, yeah, here's an, um, so this is the eastern parcel or the right parcel and then the second picture is the, is the western parcel or the left parcel. So as Mike mentioned, this is kind of our current concept, um, after evaluating the site limitations and trying to meet the, the city's ordinance, the zoning and setbacks and parking, um, et cetera. A unique feature of this site that I just wanted to kinda, there, there's a really big topography change from front to back, um, fifty or sixty feet. Um, so it really limits the actual buildable square footage of the site. And really, at the backside of our building and parking lot, it drops ten feet down to where the, the back surface parking lot is and then below that, it's another thirty to forty feet. Um, so we would attempt to retain and/or leave majority of that back half or half the site untouched. Um, but we tried to do our best to take advantage of those, um, topography changes as we orientated the site, um, where our parking garage, um, would most likely come in on the east side. Um, and then the surface parking on back is, is like ten feet down and then we have some site amenities here. So I just wanted to walk through that as we, as like a, as a first blush, but then, um, further on the site, as Mike alluded to, from the neighborhood meeting, a couple of the comments would be, you know, continue to screen as best we can. So this is just concept and we'd further a landscaping plan out, but we tried our best to add, you know, mature trees to the frontage road, um, to have privacy. And then on the western parcel as well, on the west side, um, trying to, to maximize some screening there as well. And we were actually talking more recently, most likely if you move this project forward, we would eliminate the second garage entrance total, in total, to minimize, um, um, you know, cars coming down and, and lights going to the west to really be cognizant of that neighbor. And that would further help with buffering as well. So it's another, um, we think positive attribute as we continue to evaluate the site. From there, um, that blue circle is not a pool or a ice skating rink, um, but it's like a stormwater pond. So stormwater retention, um, you know, as a, as we try to evaluate, you know, as Mike mentioned, our first orientation of this project was to do a pitched roof, but trying to be cognizant of limiting the height, but also helping with stormwater management retention, um, that helps with getting as much as we can through the filtration system, um, on the front side. From there, these little, um, I'll call them tan boxes on the back, this is where we'd have some of our outdoor amenity programming. And I'll show some examples further in the presentation, but this would be like our playground, um, outdoor patio space, grills, et cetera. I think it'd be really, um, quiet and quaint with all the topography and, and the, um, the trees back there. So that's kind of the site and the orientation of, of the current concept. And then the next slide is just an example of another project that we've done as far as the like common areas and some of those amenity spaces. So you're walking in the front door, um, down here and when you come in, you have your mailroom. We've been implementing a lot of package rooms in most of our projects. They've been fairly popular, um, in the last five years or so, um, inclusive of fridges with grocery delivery, Amazon, et cetera. Those have been, um, like I said, very popular. And then we just have, you know, on, onsite leasing spaces, a nice sitting area, um, lounge area, and then we have a community, nice sized community room with a kitchen that it's very popular with renting out for birthday parties or gatherings or Vikings games, et cetera. And then we have a fitness room programmed. You see no laundry service centers, cause all of our units would have in-unit laundry, um, which has been pretty popular, but also Reuter Walton sander that I wouldn't say is necessarily customary. So that's just an example of kind of a, a co- a common area package. From here, um, we just have some examples of either projects that we've built that we kind of would envision taking inspirations from or building facade examples and/or Cos Wilson may have, have built them. Um, this one is actually a project of ours, is Cadence, sixty-eight units in Bloomington, right across from the Mall of America on the west side on seventy-seven. So just an example of a four-story, flat-roof building, um, in our portfolio, fitness room, kind of a common area, the Hall Abbe area. Some really nice, like I said, communal spaces, example of kind of your community room with the kitchenette in the back. This is our, we have a project in Little Canada, two sister projects, sixty units each, Lica and Litmore, that have done really well for us. This is a three-story, flat roof, but again, example of kinda some building material. You have brick, you have, um, you know, lap siding, um, and then some hardy board with some, you know, neutral tone color schemes that have gone over really well, our project. And then just another, I think these are Cos Wilson projects that they've done, um, and just different color schemes and, and material kinda differences, just give example of like inspiration. But again, this is conceptual, we'd love feedback and, and guidance on what would best, um, kind of align with the city's vision and, and what they'd like to see. But here's some outdoor kind of spaces that I just, again, just examples of what we envisioned trying to implement here on that backside. I think we could do a really good job here with kinda how it's orientated in the back. This is our project that, in Reuter Walton's portfolio, uh, Morrow, it's in St. Paul off a university, um, some of their community spaces. Bridewell's another one of ours, again, it's a three-story, um, pitched roof, but it's, it's in the Reuter Walton portfolio, it was built a couple of years ago, um, three stories. And just the high quality of, you know, the, the kitchen and, and unit finishes. This is their community room. And then I mentioned Lica before, but again, just examples. So that's just some examples of some of the finishes indoor, inside and out of what we try to achieve here. Uh, next, I just wanted to touch on kind of why we kinda came to the site in general and something that Paul and I wanted to highlight was, we just implement, um, completed a market study, um, from a third party. And I mentioned this to Mike and Travis, but, um, this just shows the market demand and kind of, um, the pent-up demand that is needed and shown in your guys' community here. Um, it's kinda hard to see, so I apologize, it's small, but down at the bottom, I highlighted for a lie Tucker workforce housing project, when this market study was completed, they surveyed, they had one vacant unit at the time, or less than one percent vacancy. And up above, when they surveyed these properties, there's three-year waitlist, eighteen to twenty-four month waitlist. Just for context, when, when we're looking at projects and markets, it's kind of a, a standard where a five percent vacancy is, is considered a strong market. Burnsville's overall vacancy is less than three percent, two point, or two point two in total, two point seven even on your market rate. So it really shows demand. You guys have a, a really strong employer market, workforce market. And we, we know, or in our research, it shows that, you know, a lot of individuals and families wanna work within a certain radius of where they, where they work, where they live, um, kind of a five to ten mile radius. And there's such a big job market, um, down here that it kinda just shows that is a need. And then just, this is just a further backup or detail into a unit mix of what Mike, so one-twos and threes, heavies in the twos and threes, we, again, we, market demand kind of notes that there's a strong market for two and three bedrooms, so we're trying to achieve that. But as Mike mentioned, so for our financing through Dakota County, these are max rents for twenty-twenty-five that we'd be achieving and our market study confirmed that those are more than achievable, um, in the market here. So a one-bedroom, if we were to build it today, we'd be restricted to a fourteen, fourteen hundred and thirty unit dollars, a two-bedroom seventeen hundred and a three-bedroom like nineteen sixty. Again, those are mandated and they're, they're annually, so every spring and April typically, those, those rents are, are put out there. So the next slide, what I wanted to show is kinda how these rents compared to some of the other local projects, um, just for context, I guess. And those projects that you'll see on the next slider, projects that are in these yellow areas, so what I tried to find are some projects in the vicinity of the project that we're proposing and then a couple of your newer market rate projects at the heart of the city where a lot of the newer development is being built, um, just for an example, so. Um, so yeah, here on our left, you'll see our proposed rents as of today and then ranges from the survey that I pulled here recently for the, the other projects in the area. Um, so Stone Grove is right across the street, you know, that's your traditional older, you know, seventies, three-story walk-up, these are traditional market rate projects. But you'll see kind of, they're right below or right in line with the rents that we would be, um, achieving. And then Rivers Edge and Willow Way, they are, um, kinda right down five. Sorry, my cursor doesn't do a great job, but the other two yellow shapes, triangle shapes on the west side, um, you'll see those rents are below, um, at least River Ridge, below or right on par with what we're proposing. And then Concord Flats, which I would say is probably one of your nicer properties and then Maven, um, both in the heart of the city, those market rate rents are, um, kinda right above fifty to a hundred and fifty dollars roughly per month, um, on top of what we propose. So, you know, we're right in line, but I think it argues kinda what we're exactly trying to achieve, that missing middle, that workforce housing product that a lot of your employers and, and base are trying to, are starving, you know, for is another housing option. Um, and then Mike mentioned it, and again, I'm sorry, it's, it's kinda small, but this just confirms, um, the HUD limits on rents and incomes for twenty-twenty-five and what we'd be restricted to based on the financing that we're trying to achieve. And what we're finding in our, in our offices, you know, this is what market is calling for as far as the demanded, um, product type and we, we wouldn't be able to build, um, like a pure traditional market rate project for these rents. I don't think we would be able to even build, um, you know, one of the luxury high-end market rate, in the, in the current market, which is where the interest rates are at, construction pricing, tariffs, um, et cetera. So just for context. And then the, the income limits here are also attached, as Mike mentioned, the fifty-five thousand is the, the max income for a one person for twenty-twenty-five. And then it goes on, if you have two or three or, or four people, um, living in, in that unit, per unit type. And then I believe my last slide, and I'll open up for questions or comments, is, is just an example of kind of doubling down on the market need. A quick kinda slide that I put together, um, kind of a snapshot of the current for-sale market in Burnsville. I looked online a couple of days ago and you guys had fifty-six single-family homes for sale currently, um, in total, no filters, no, no matter the price. And then, but only eighteen were below four hundred thousand dollars. And with a four hundred thousand dollar, um, proposed sale price, you know, with twenty percent down, so you need to have eighty thousand dollars, your, your mortgage is, you know, twenty-four hundred dollars, um, in today's market and today's interest rate, which, um, for a lot of folks, including myself, like that is, um, it, it's, it's a hard number to achieve, um, and come up with. So even more, you know, need and demand for, um, product types of what we believe we would like to propose. I guess with that, any final remarks or comments or else I think we'd open it up for questions or feedback or comments, um, that we can kinda take back and continue to noodle on.
Comments, thoughts? Yeah. Uh, council member Vince Workman.
Thank you. As you said, we don't have any of your product in town yet. And just over the last several years with the dramatic uptick in apartments in Burnsville, I've kinda put companies into two categories and that's the ones that build them and sell them and then the ones that build them and maintain ownership. Chase does a very good job with tenant involvement, picnics, events, things like that, to kinda build a community, um, within their buildings. Where do you guys fall on that scale?
Great question. So we're, um, we're a long-term owner and operator. I guess we third-party manage out our projects, but both of the companies that we utilize are both locally based in the Twin Cities. We have weekly or monthly meetings with all of them and, um, our owner, um, Nick drives by most of our portfolio on a weekly basis. I mean, um, we're a pretty hands-on owner, um, and we would be long-term owners for fifty to thirty years, um, for a, for a project like this.
It's important, cause the problem properties we have in town are the ones that get scooped up by private equity and then...
Sure.
I'm sure you guys are familiar with the issues that come with that. The word apartment fatigue has, uh, come into my brain a lot, just because we've had a lot of construction for apartments in Burnsville and the community is, um, starting to notice or they, they have noticed. But a lot of that's been primarily in the heart of the city, which, you know, was designed for density. This is kind of a part of town that we maybe haven't focused on as much as we should have, um, with our last comp plan. I wasn't really sure where I stood on this, but you guys put together a pretty good presentation and knowing that you're here for the long haul makes a big difference to me. So I appreciate you guys running your business model that way.
And I'm here, can I follow up to council member organs? Of the forty-some that you've built in your, your slide with all the pictures, how many do you currently own of those today?
Good question. Well, I would say half, probably. To comment on that is, most of those that our principal has sold were, um, I'd say urban in downtown or dinky town market rate projects or student housing projects.
He also had, he had partners, it's, he, Reuter Walton in its current form is about seven years old. Our principal had a previous, uh, partner and so when they split, they kinda dissolved some of the assets. And so a lot of the projects that were developed are no longer owned by what I would call the current rendition of Reuter Walton. But the stuff that we've done, I've been here for six years, I've developed, um, ten workforce housing projects, we own all ten of them still and, and most of the market rate stuff we've done since I've been here, we've still own.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, council member Dan Gustafson.
You have showed some really nice pictures of the common areas and the kitchens and that, is that what we could expect this will look like?
Yes.
Workforce housing?
Yep. Those are all workforce housing projects.
I mean, I know that area, I get down, Vince is right, we need to pay more attention to that area, but I get down in there, I actually had some of the pictures you have. I, to me, I think this would be a big improvement to that neighborhood and it'd be a nice addition for everybody down there.
Any other comments? Yes, council member Dan Keely.
Well, I, uh, overall, I studied the map and where the site is. I think, um, the top floor backside units are gonna have a heck of a vision of, uh, downtown Minneapolis over the River Valley. Really, those are, anything along that bluff, uh, today, there's commercial properties with incredible views, there's some, uh, single-family homes with incredible views. I mean, to me, it's premium land, uh, for that, uh, reason. And so, uh, but I, did you put a flat roof on it for height restriction reasons or just to address the concerns or was that the original plan? Cause the one of, the one picture that you showed where you had a pitched roof, I thought looked really well. I mean, that's a good-looking product, too.
It was too full, cause actually a, a flat roof is, is more expensive than a pitched roof. So it was cognizant... So I was cognizant of trying to keep the height of the building down as best we could. And then, and then another big factor was the stormwater retention and being cognizant of that, knowing that like a pitched roof on the backside and all the elevation change, how would you get it like back around the building to get into the, the city infrastructure was challenging? Brian, do you have anything else to add?
Exactly what I was going to say, the main reason we switched from a pitch to a flat is that rainwater retention. We can control it a lot better when it's a flat roof. Yeah, we can't pour anything down the hill, so we gotta wrap it around the building and then, well, like Jared said, we're about ten feet down on the backside, so we gotta ramp it around and up ten feet. So, um, flat roof made a lot of economical sense.
Totally get it.
At a cost.
With four, uh, four stories flat roof and three stories pitched roof, you're almost, you're less height almost with a, a four-foot flat roof. You probably are less when you get to the very pitch of a three-story pitch roof.
Well, and the height, it wasn't, is less of a concern, I know some of the residents pointed that out, but sort of for the design to just sort of fit the area, there's a lot of, of the older product there, obviously, that had pitched roofs. So it, it tends to soften the building a little bit, makes a little bit, but in this case, you, you don't have a choice, right? You've got topography that's a cliff to deal with, so no problem. I think the project overall fits in that area well and I think it's going to be a nice improvement for that particular neighborhood, based on what's there now. It's been, been there for a very, very long time. There is a couple more houses that seem to be in the automotive repair business on either side that, as well. But overall, like the project, I'm, I'm a big fan of workforce housing. I think that's the missing metal for us. We have, we have some pretty good values with lower rents in these nineteen-seventy vintage apartment complexes and we have some great new market rate product out there. But getting three bedrooms is hard, right? I mean, almost, I don't know if any of the new product that's been built has really much in the way of three-bedroom offerings. It's usually capped at two because market demand says studio and one-bedroom is where all the action's at and they'll throw a few two-bedrooms in because there's some there. But three is important for these working families, so I, I really think this is a great product, product to bring into Burnsville based on what we already have and what we need. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in and presenting your, your vision for that site. As I looked at that site and also what it looks like today and what you discovered on the back end of that site is not very pretty. Our ordinance just says that we, you know, if you can see it from the road, then we do something about property maintenance, but all of this was hidden in the back. And you heard that from the residents who showed up to the meeting. So they all thought that this is going to be a big improvement to the site. It's a product that you've done your work very well with the market study, which showed you that there is still a high demand in Burnsville. And so, thank you for that. I was surprised that the demand is still that high with as much product that has been built in the heart of the city in the last three years. So the other thing that I wanted to speak to is that your pond. So it's a utility function, but you have an opportunity to make that an amenity, to make it look really nice and it would really do something to highlight that you're, you're building. And you have playground for the children because if you're going to have families there, you have two and three bedrooms, units, so you have enough, you have a place for the children to play. The other thing is that driving thirteen and looking south to your prop, to the property that you have under contract, in the wintertime, all that foliage comes down. That's going to have great views in the wintertime and it'll also be, looking from thirteen south, it's going to give a better view also of that whole area with all the foliage gone. So just reading the background and understanding what the people are also saying and I'm grateful that you're going to do a, a traffic study to understand all of that and also thank you for moving all of the surface parking, most of it to the back of the building, so your building can be visually appealing from the curb, from the street side and that you're putting some landscaping that will also buffer some of the view to that hard surface. So that, and then of course you have that pond that can also be an amenity and not just a utilitarian function of the site. So it is a great improvement to those two pieces of property, so that's going to add a lot of value to that area and it'll increase that, that market value. So from my perspective, the neighborhood is in agreement and it's zoned, single-family, but we can also change the zoning and move in that direction. Councilmember Dan.
If I may, I just want to follow up on something Vince said that I, I hear about as well. Some people have lived in the city for a long time, have seen all these apartments go up over the last ten years and they don't really understand the demand. Your chart was very good at showing the demand is still strong. We do have a large commercial base and I know there was a study many years ago, I think it capped out ten years ago, so it goes back a little bit far and maybe staff has some updated numbers. But when you, when you look at the number of residents that left to work somewhere else and the number of people who came from somewhere else to work in Burnsville, it was almost a wash. It was like a half point off, not, not a lot. I'd like to see how that's changed, but ultimately our goal is have more people live where they work, right? So they can both live and work in Burnsville, take advantage of the walkable communities that we offer in the heart of the city and other amenities, bring more people to the Burnsville Center, to a lot of... So I think there's a, I, I, I pulled up Chat GTP five because I wanted a statement that could best encapsulate why, to our residents that are watching, like, why are we doing this? Why are we encouraging, or at least all, all we did was open the door, right? The demand was always there. Many, many years ago, Councilmember Gustafson came to me and said, do you notice that everybody around us is developing high, high-end amenity-rich apartments, but we have this door closed for any of that? And I said, yes, you know, literally every suburb around us was building these projects ten years before we started to do it. And, and so I think that's part of the demand in Burnsville because now we're getting into it. Ten years has passed, there's a lot of population growth and they want a place to live and a lot of people love Burnsville for many, many reasons, right? They, you know, the, the easy access to downtown, the parks per capita that we brag about, those are all great reasons why people want to come live here, uh, live here. Our, our festivals, the amount of, you know, community things that we do. So the desire is there, but finding a place, right? And, and it's being absorbed as fast as it's being built. So I just want to read this because I think it's, it encapsulates it very well. "We're not replacing neighborhoods, we're balancing them. Strategic high-density housing in the right places supports Burnsville's long-term vitality, provides more choices for our residents at every stage of life," because we know these apartments fulfill empty nesters, you know, young couples with no kids and even those that are just starting out before they need something bigger. And in this case, you know, you've got three bedrooms. "Provides more choices for the residents and strengthens economic health of the community. It's about thoughtful growth that preserves what people love about Burnsville while making sure we thrive in the decades ahead." I think that's kind of my feeling, but I couldn't have written it that way. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
One of the things that I wanted to finish my remarks is that the slide that you put up on how much it would cost to purchase a home, can you put that slide back up? Because that's very important. You're targeting a market with sixty percent AMI. It's going to be difficult for any of those folks to be able to purchase a home, whether in Burnsville, Apple Valley, Lakeville, Savage, anywhere around. So it's about having the right housing product that would meet the income of the families who want to live in Burnsville. And that's what this does and what all of the other apartment buildings, multi-housing buildings in Burnsville, both for all ages, but also for seniors. Because to even get a down payment is going to be very difficult for anybody with sixty percent AMI. So I think that's the other indicator of why this is important also. So, thank you. From my perspective, you're doing some things that the residents who showed up and, and you're doing something to improve the property. So, thank you. And you're meeting a need that we have. So you're meeting a need, improving the property and addressing what our residents are saying. Okay? Anything else? Jeff, to you and your staff, Mike, I think it's a goal for you to work with Reuters on this project. We look forward to seeing your application and seeing you through it.
Thank you.
Great, thanks so much for your time.
When do you think you'll start?
Traffic study.
Yeah. Great question. I guess the whole provision in working with Dakota County, the goal, if all things move forward, the plan and meet expectations would...
When I saw that Dakota County was part of your financing plan, that's the reason why, because it might be next year before you even.
Well, they want to close this year.
Pardon me?
They want to close this year.
Oh, okay.
There's incentive to close this year from both parties, so, um, and we, we think we have a path to meet, you know, expectations of, of the right entitlement process to achieve that. So we have a lot of work to do to get there, but, um, yeah, the goal would be to close and break ground in December.
Okay. All right. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for choosing Burnsville to do this next project.
If this goes well, there's more land by Burnsville Center, you guys should go check out.
Okay.
Thanks very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jeff, Ben, Travis and Mike, thank you. Okay. The next item now is roundtable and Councilmember Keely, I think the first item is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd, I'd like to start my comments with a couple of excerpts from today's U.S. News and World Report article headlined, "Americans Say the U.S. Is in a Leadership Crisis." You might think, given today's news cycles, that it's all about politics across the spectrum, but it actually includes public service, healthcare business and education. But specifically about public service, the poll asked what people wanted or liked in public service leaders and the respondents identified the following as the most desirable traits: loyal, authentic and collaborative. Thought that was interesting. I think all of us sitting here at this table tonight possess all of those qualities and, and much, much more. Mayor and councilmember staff and our viewing audience who look us, look at us to run the city, I've prepared a message to ensure that this idea is communicated properly and there's no misunderstanding as to the nature of the idea that I'm presenting tonight. I would like to propose that the city of Burnsville adopt a schedule that would reduce two of our three meetings from either the month of July or August from each year, with the provision that a meeting be called in those weeks if any urgent need were to arise. There is several cities around the country that observe this same type of thing, big and small. I, I want to cite the benefits, I think, to the community. And it, and it's not all about city council members. Summer is a peak season for community engagement outside of our council chambers. Festivals, national night out, youth sports, neighborhood gatherings, all give council members more opportunities to meet residents where they are. Reducing formal meetings allows us to be present at these events and have conversations in the places people actually spend their summer days. There are some benefits to the council and especially staff. Currently, Burnsville's council meets multiple times per month, twelve months out of the year. Along with travel to city government conferences and committee assignment meetings, the city council schedule also means staff in administration, legal, finance, public works, communications, spend a large portion of their time preparing agendas, minutes, live streams, follow-up actions, all these things. Scaling back for a few weeks during either July or August can, I think, reduce a little burnout, improves staff retention and allows more focused work on big projects such as budget preparation and capital improvement planning, which we take very seriously. In fact, we start in March or April, very early on in the year. We all signed up for three meetings, sometimes four meetings a month, year in and year out. Absolutely, we did. However, that doesn't mean there isn't a better way to accomplish the same amount of work. The proposed model I recommend to the council discuss is to hold one regular meeting in the month of either July or August and the option to call that special meeting for other urgent matters and not have the other two, or in some cases, the other three meetings in those months. This model protects transparency, mirrors best practices from cities nationwide and strengthens both our community engagement and our internal efficiency. So I, I, I would like to see us talk about following the examples of some of these other cities that have recognized that sometimes, especially in Minnesota, when summer is very, very short, I feel like it's already starting to be over with, doing a little less meeting means much more meaningful work. Thank you. Open it up for discussion.
So you're saying June, July or August, we only, just pick one of those month and only have one meeting that month?
I did not mention June.
Oh, July or August?
Pick July or August. Those are the two peak summer vacation months of the year and have one official meeting to conduct business, pay the bills, handle whatever may be required and not have the other two unless there's a need that triggers calling the meeting.
Members of the council, your thoughts?
I appreciate the idea, but I just wonder how that would work for something like what we just did tonight. Because I don't know when these guys approach staff, what the timing is between receiving an idea and getting it to us. But if we had an entire month off and it pushed a project of that size and scale back, you know, three or four weeks, is that going to have implications to big projects? And I don't know if there's a, a really a good way to forecast something like that.
This idea calls for one meeting in the month, not the whole month off.
I would be on staff.
But I, I, I'm hearing what Vince is saying. Anybody else?
Well, I...
No, go for it.
Oh, I was just going to say, we, I, I hear what you're saying, honestly, Dan. There are times I'd like to take a whole month off myself, but, but I also know we have the, the business of the city we have to do and, and we are deep into budgets and so we have, we do budgets every month and so we, we know we're going to have to do that. And I just wonder how much comes out of it. You know, there's so much we take care of on our consent agenda that I don't think we sometimes realize how much we're actually taking care of and that you just can't keep pushing that out where we have four pages of consent at one meeting a month and I'm not sure that would work out well for us. I, I do like the concept, but I'm not sure that we serve the, the residents of Burnsville well by, by doing that.
Tara?
I will ask your city manager, do you see any problem with doing this? If you had a year to prepare for it?
Thanks for asking. I, this being a roundtable item, I'm not prepared to answer that question. I would need to go back to the team and really... I would need to go back to the team and really look at the impacts. I understand the intention, but I would want to take a thoughtful approach to answering that question for the council and make sure that I'm not missing anything. I think there's been a couple of good points that have been brought up, both about flexibility and also things like making sure that we have a statutory obligation to pay the bills. So the one meeting a month would work for that. I would want to talk to the team more about things like budget preparation and development review among some of the other things that might come up on a more timely basis that we don't have a lot of control over.
Then I would like to see this moved to work session because I cannot say without having staff input on this. So without staff input, I would like to see this moved to a work session so that we give staff time to weigh in on this. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to decide it without them.
Yeah. Well, from my perspective, Dan, you've complained about the number of meetings that we we have. And because of that, we now double up on our meetings. We, and staff has a lot of work that they do and prepare. Now we have double meetings. We have a council meeting, and then we have a budget meeting. We have a work session meeting, and then we have a budget meeting on the same night. The other part to your issue that you brought on, by statute, we have 60 days. Once an applicant files an application with us, and you know this, being on a planning commission, we have 60 days to process that. Only unless the applicant asks for an extension, or else we ask for an extension. But it's always 60 days by statute. So what does that mean? Do we say to applicants then, "You can't apply for anything in April or May"? Because we might not be able to accommodate approving that within that timeline? The other is that...
I would hope it would not be that poorly run.
Well, but the thing is, it is something that if they're going to have, they're, they're working with the county.
They are working with the county. However, like...
But the thing is...
If there's 60 days and they're applying and that kind of stuff.
The thing is, it now places a lot of burden on...
Things can be scheduled.
It puts a lot of burden on staff also. So the thing is...
We don't know that because staff has not weighed in.
But we've been here...
You are speaking for staff.
We've been here doing all of this. I'm not going to argue. I'm giving my, my, my perception of where things are at. Because the thing is, if you want to take time off, take time off. You have that prerogative to do that. But I don't believe that we... We're here to serve the public, and I don't want to compromise our commitment to the people that we're going to be here to facilitate the work of the people, our developers who come in, residents who have things that they need to do. I, we double up on meetings, and if you want to take time off, take time off. Not everybody wants to take a vacation in July or August. Dan, you took a vacation in April or May, and then you took another one in July. I'm going to be taking one at the end of this month, and then I'll take another one in December like I always do. But everybody chooses a vacation that is accommodating to their family. Some of our staff members with young children go on the shoulder months, a shoulder time, like for spring break, or in the fall for parent-teacher conference, or for Thanksgiving. So everybody has a choice. But for me, it's let's not compromise the standard of service that we have put in place so that we are saying to our people, "We are here to commit to and to serve." And we should keep our meetings regular and keep our service to our community strong. And we've done a great job. We have done, our staff have done a great job with making sure that we have all of our budget meetings. We now start in March, and we double up on meetings so that when we get to September, we're able to to vote on the max tax. And then sometimes we don't need that fourth meeting, that next meeting, and we can approve the budget. You complained that we have, we have meetings on the fourth week. We now only have four meetings that we have on the fourth week of a month, and that's for our leadership check-ins and our interviews with candidates who are running for commission. So there was a, we utilized the fourth week then. But otherwise, all of our meetings are doubled up. We don't have a budget meeting tonight, but that's coming up. We doubled up last time, so...
That's a great efficient use of time. So I hope that you take my complaining that caused that efficient, better, efficient use of time as a positive, because it is.
Well, it is. We're doing that.
Exactly.
Because you did, and here we are, and we're doing it. So I don't, I don't...
I appreciate my ideas being positively supported because I'm looking for an efficient use of our time and allowing efficient use of staff time. Every time we come here at night, the staff has to come here too. They have to prepare for it. So I'm just saying in the months of July or August, that we have one formal meeting, and then we could have another meeting. If a developer comes in, that would trigger a meeting. We would still meet our 60-day. But if it doesn't, then we don't. That's it. It's not, it's not saving us time. It's saving staff a lot of time and work.
I don't know if that's...
That we come in, and sometimes we come in and all it is is a consent agenda, and we, we maybe, you may read a proclamation, and then we leave.
I will say the same thing to you as I said to the mayor. We don't know that yet.
Right.
Because we haven't heard from staff. Like, that's my point is, I would like to hear from staff. If this is something that's going to negatively impact that, I want to hear that. If staff comes back and they're like, "Yeah, we talked about it. Actually, it will help us with X, Y, or Z." Like, I, I want to hear that. I'm agnostic on this. I almost always vote to advance something to work session. There are occasions when I haven't. But if it's something to do with staff and staff time, I prefer to have them have the ability to weigh in. That's all I'm saying on this. I don't, I don't have an opinion yet because I have not heard from staff.
Okay. Because even if we delay it, it's still staff work. It still will double up. It doesn't, it doesn't take away any of that, even on consent agenda items. Vince?
I don't know if a work session's necessary. You kind of nailed what my next thought was, is that if somebody goes on vacation, somebody goes on vacation. I mean, we don't take attendance. We've missed meetings for personal reasons before. And as long as there's three of us here, we can still legally hold a meeting unless there's a supermajority vote, which we don't get too many times a year. So I don't know. I just, it doesn't seem like what we were doing was failing.
Yeah.
I mean, I always feel a little guilty when I miss a meeting, but I know it's in good hands when I'm not here, so...
Yeah. We trust one another to make the good decisions.
Yeah, we all take time off when we want to take time off. I mean, that works for us.
So do you need staff to weigh in on this?
I don't, I don't need staff to have one more thing to start working on right now for a work session.
Okay. So Kara would like to hear from staff and...
I don't get to. Staff does not get to say.
Well, I, I, all we're doing is giving staff more work. And I don't need to hear from staff about, I don't need to hear from staff because whether we delay it, it's still going to, it's still, they're still going to have to do the work for the next, and it'll double up. It, it just pushes the work. It doesn't go away. The work doesn't go away because we're missing a meeting. It doesn't.
They're physically here.
So I think we're going to pass on this one, Dan. There's three of us. It says it's not necessary to have staff take a look at it. And if you want to take time off, take time off. Take time off.
Yeah, that's not the point. You're missing the point, but that's okay.
No, you're...
I accept it. Hey, it's the majority of this, and I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
It is what it is, right?
Okay. So then we'll move on. And Vince, you have anything to report?
I do not.
Experienced Burnsville, we have our half-day board meeting on Thursday. I think Jeff will be at that meeting presenting our economic development plan, so...
Okay.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah. Kara?
No. No.
Dan?
Nothing major going on right now, actually. I'm good.
Okay. And there is nothing to report. We don't have any... Well, we meet quarterly for MLC, and so I don't have anything to report. Michelle, you have anything? Greg? Okay. We will move on. And if there is nothing else from staff, we stand adjourned by acclamation. Thank you.